Can everybody seated, please? We'll bring the meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. We can have the call to order by our city clerk.
Mayor Denise Del Mar.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, John Harbidian.
Here.
Welcome, welcome, we're happy to have you.
You're really here.
Councilmember Rachel Arzamendi.
Present.
John Kapocha.
Here.
And Jean Goss.
Here.
Madam Chairperson, you have quorum and you may conduct city business.
Thank you. I'd like to turn it over to our councilmember Rochelle Arzamendi, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
If we can all please stand and face the flag. You can put your right hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you can all please remain standing. What I would like to share tonight as part of the invocation or inspiration is, given that we have Memorial Day coming up this week, and recognizing also that for Memorial Day, we want to honor those that have fought for this country and died in either battle or in war. And also recognizing all the veterans and those that serve our country. I have a poem that I'd like to read by Joanna Fuchs. Says, "Let's honor those, the men and women who serve, whose dedication to our country does not falter, halt, or swerve. Let's respect them for their courage, they are ready to do what's right, to keep America safe so we can sleep better at night. Let's support and defend our soldiers, whose hardships are brutal and cruel, whose discipline we can imagine, who follow each order and rule. Here's to those who choose to be warriors, and their helpers good and true. They're fighting for American values, they're fighting for me and you." Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. Do I get to entertain a motion to proceed as we have presented with the agenda? Although perhaps we want to do the presentations at the end, that way we can have all these people with us the whole evening, huh?
You're sneaky.
Alrighty, do we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of our meeting minutes from May 8th. Did everybody have a chance to review the minutes? Do we have any changes or suggestions? Mayor Pro Tem, anything from you?
No, I'll abstain since I was not there.
Okay.
Move to approve, the minutes are impeccable.
Thank you, City Clerk Spears, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have four ayes and one abstain. Thank you. This is the time of the meeting where we look at our city council reports and who would like to start from any activities that they engaged in since our last meeting.
I have no report.
I'm gonna pass.
Really?
I have several things that could, but given that we've got a lot of people in the audience and a couple of big things on the agenda today.
You know, you won't say one thing? Okay. Mayor Pro Tem, do you have anything?
I'm here, I'll report, nothing reported this morning.
And councilmember Arzamendi.
Nothing reported this time.
I just want to mention that we did have our older American nominee and award, Darlene Crook, and we were excited to meet her family a couple Fridays ago. We were able to go out there and see her. And also to remind everybody that we do have the Mount Wilson Trail Race this Saturday. And also we had our chili cook-off. And perhaps at the, you're shaking your head. I know. So I'm thinking we may have to have the Kiwanis come and give us a report.
Well, I can at least share that we have our first place winner sitting in the front row here.
The critics' choice, right?
Mr. James Carlson, so congratulations.
And what was the people's choice? Who was the people's choice?
I forgot.
We don't know? We did have a couple other people who did participate. We had our city manager had a nice chili there, as did our chief of police. He had a nice chili there.
He placed.
And he did place.
Yes, he did place.
Of course, Camino's family, so that was nice. It was a nice day. And the councilmember Arzamendi and I did represent city council and did the line dancing. So I'm sure you can find the video somewhere out there. Alrighty, no other reports. This is the time when we talk to our public. Our public can come forward to the microphone and talk about anything that they would like, up to about three minutes, for anything not on the agenda. And we would like you to just state your name, please, if you can.
Good evening, my name is Lori Byer. And this is my neighbor, do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Becky Farmer.
And there's one other neighbor who is going to come but isn't here yet. We're calling, we live on East Highland. And we're calling about the situation on 127 East Highland. I don't know if city council is familiar with it. We've been working with the city manager and code enforcement. The family, it was an elderly couple, they're no longer there. It's a very sad situation. But now it's come to a point where we're concerned about health concerns. And the city has condemned the home. They red-tagged it, nobody's allowed to go in it. And the family was going to clean it up. But now they've changed their minds and they are selling it, it's for sale by century 21. So we want your help. We're asking, city is aware of it, but we were asking if maybe one of the city council members would take this on as like a pet project or something, since you live here too. Our concern is when they do, either they just bulldoze it or they develop it because of abatement. We're very, very concerned. Rats, roaches, you know, all kinds of stuff. It's been vacant for a very long time, there's holes in the house. There's also outside cars and debris. And I know there's limits to what we can do, probably, most likely legally. But if we could have one of you from city council take this on, it's kind of helping us be our eyes and ears. So when this does get developed, a bulldozer just doesn't show up and everything that's in there scatters. We're really concerned about health concerns and we're just wanting some help. So, you know, again, city manager and code enforcement has helped us out, but we're thinking now that it's being sold, we kind of need somebody else to, you know, at least talk with whoever's going to buy the place to develop it or tear it down to make sure this is done in a safe, healthy way. Do you want to say anything more?
I just want to stand with Lori and request your aid in this matter. I live on Merrill Avenue, which is right around the corner from this house. And I had an invasion of rats last fall in my attic and crawl space under the house, which I had to take care of at the cost of $5,000. So I'm not anxious to have to do that again. There's been also a very high incidence of mosquito complaints on Highland since that house was vacated. In fact, the county health department did a house-to-house visit one day trying to track down the source of these mosquitoes, which are definitely carrying Zika virus and other things. So it will affect all the neighbors around us and we'd be very grateful for your help, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
David Gordon, president of the Sierra Madre Playhouse. I thought I would take advantage of this larger-than-usual audience for the council meetings, to alert people to the fact that our current production, The Immigrant, is coming to an end this weekend. There are still a very few tickets left, so book now. And to tell you that our summer musical, Pump Boys and Dinets, about a musical based in an old-fashioned diner, is starting on June 22nd. I expect to see all the council there on opening night, thank you.
Thank you, David. Oh, okay. Can we do that after public comment? Do we have anybody, any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. And I was just reminded that we do need to report out from our closed session by our city attorney.
Yes, we had no reportable action.
Thank you. Well, job well done. And then, Mr. City Manager, if we could just do maybe a little follow-up on the 127 East Highland and come back with some suggestions on how we can keep an eye on that and keep it clean. Thank you. Okay. Next is our presentation from Sierra Madre Civic Club, donations to various community organizations. Come on up.
I don't know if I can even get close enough. Hi, my name is Jane Zamontide. Good evening, mayor, city council members and friends. I have the privilege of being the outgoing president of Sierra Madre Civic Club. Civic Club is a civic and philanthropic organization that's been in Sierra Madre since 1944. We just had our 74th birthday. We're civic in the sense that we take part in a lot of the activities that take place in the city. This past year, we organized the Fourth of July games in the park. We sponsored a concert in the park. We also organized all the activities surrounding the Halloween window painting. And Mayor Arzamendi at the time was one of our judges. We had several of our members, docents at the Wisteria Vine, welcoming the more than 4,000 visitors that attended that event. We weighed fish, not me, but others weighed fish and gave certificates at the Huck Finn Fishing Derby. We've stuffed bags for the Mount Wilson Trail Race participants. And this coming weekend, we're going to work at the pasta feed and the trail race itself. And closer to home, we maintain the city hall rotunda. We're the ones that take care of the planting of the rotunda, put decorations up for holidays, and make sure that that wisteria vine gets trimmed and is healthy. We raise money throughout the year by doing such things as selling confetti eggs. We have eat-outs at local restaurants. We recycle cans, bottles, and ink cartridges. We take part in the community yard sale and we have a large fundraiser that this year was a luncheon and a Chinese auction. Don't ask me why it's called Chinese, nobody's been able to tell any of us. But it was successful. To that end, our philanthropies include Sierra Madre seniors, who are, Sierra Madre students who are seniors in high school and are going on to further their education. To that end, earlier this month, we gave five seniors each $1,000 as an educational award. Tonight, I have the privilege of giving our philanthropy awards to nonprofits. The only criteria for the philanthropy, making a request for an award, is that the nonprofit either offer goods or services that are available to Sierra Madre residents or they maintain a Sierra Madre landmark. The members then vote on all of the applications. That's how they want the money to distribute it. And tonight, I have $14,000 in checks to give to 11 nonprofits. To the Convalescent Aid Society. And I don't know if we have representatives, everyone here?
I'm here.
They are going to use the money for durable medical equipment that is on loan free of charge to residents. And right now, over 400 pieces are available in Sierra Madre as residents. The Sierra Madre Middle School. They are trying to get a lighting system up for their theater program. They want the money for free code-approved electric circuits.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Cert.
Oh, my goodness.
No.
I should have made a run, you took two.
Cert.
Cert?
Okay. They just got in a van, communications van, and this is going to help equip the van. The Creative Arts Group. They have the fourth graders from Sierra Madre Elementary coming over to do a clay project that's quite extensive. They'll be there a couple of times. So they have requested money for teaching or instructors and for materials. The Sierra Madre Fourth of July Committee.
Do we have anybody from the Fourth of July Committee?
Okay, we'll mail that to them.
Someone's coming down, someone's coming.
This is to allow them to have free parade entry and also provide all that entertainment that we get on the third and the fourth.
Oh, thank you.
The Mount Wilson Trail Race.
Here it comes.
This is for bike racks and for those bags that we give to all the participants.
Good, thank you, Jane.
The Sierra Madre Playhouse.
Oh, good.
They're all going to be going to for opening night.
Yes, on June 22nd.
All right, they need five new outside display cases. Theirs are of all different sizes and are not in very good shape. So these are going to have LED lighting and metal frames and nice glass in the front. The Sierra Madre Pioneer Cemetery. This is to make repairs to the kiosk and the outside doors where they keep their trash cans. Sierra Madre Public Library. This is for the One Book, One City Committee. And Sue Spears' husband and I are on that committee, so we're very grateful for that. The Sierra Madre Rose Float Association.
Do we have anybody from the Rose Float here?
This is for the LED lights on the south side of the building. They're going to put lighting there. The, and the final one is for Reading is Fundamental. This program has volunteers that go into every single second-grade classroom in the Passover Tina Unified School District three times a year. And at each meeting, the kids are allowed to get one free new book to keep. So this is to help buy those three books for each child.
Thank you.
Think of it as 1,500 books.
1,500 books. Thank you.
Thank you so much, what a wonderful night this was to give out so much money. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is a presentation of our Sierra Madre Police Department. If I can have the chief come down?
Good evening, council, mayor, and residents. Sergeant Bailey.
Dispatch here, Butler. Officer Hermio. Officer Shaw.
Why were they hiding in the back?
I don't know, they're nervous.
Come on down.
All right. So here's Sierra Madre, we have a very cool tradition of introducing our public safety employees to the council, to the residents, and to the folks we work for. I'm going to read a short bio on each one of them. Listen, put a face with the bio and you'll get to know your officer or dispatcher a little bit better. And we'll start with Sergeant Kyle Bailey. Kyle Bailey comes to the City of Sierra Madre Police Department as an officer with over 24 years of law enforcement experience. Prior to his move, he was a police officer at the Azusa Police Department. Kyle got the opportunity to work side-by-side with his brother Brandon, who's also a police officer at Azusa. Brandon, raise your hand. It should be noted that their grandfather, Gil Trillo, Mr. Trillo, was a lieutenant for the Azusa Police Department and retired in 1985. Some of you may know or remember Kyle's father, Wayne Bailey, former chief Wayne Bailey. Chief Bailey served his entire police career at the City of Sierra Madre and was chief of police from 2000 to 2005. Kyle said he simply could not pass up the opportunity to continue this unique tradition and spend the last seven years of his own career here in Sierra Madre, where his dad served. As a newly-promoted sergeant with the Sierra Madre Police Department, Kyle is looking forward to being part of the leadership team and working with the finest group of men and women that make up the department. He's also anxious to establish himself within the community and offer the highest level of professional service to our proud community. Kyle's been married to his wife Rebecca for over 22 years. Rebecca? They have two boys, Cameron and Brendan. And when Kyle is not doing things with his family, you'll more than likely see him logging miles on his road bike. Kyle heads a non-for-profit cycling club known as the Three Cs, which benefit the cycling, cop, and cancer communities, all of which hold a special place in Kyle's personal life. Sergeant Kyle Bailey. Dispatcher Lillian Shaw. Correction, former dispatcher Lillian Clark, new police officer Lillian Shaw. Raise your hand. Lillian Shaw is the second eldest of seven siblings. She was raised in South Los Angeles, graduated Crenshaw High School and later earned a BA degree and broadcast communications for Cal State LA in 2007. Before Lillian became a police officer, she was a 911 dispatcher for over 13 years. She helped to train new dispatchers at the USC Department of Public Safety as well as the Alhambro Police Department. Her interest and enjoyment in working for a police agency stems from Lillian's love for helping others. Whether it involves listening to someone vent about an unfortunate situation that they have been involved in or law enforcement-related, she enjoys and takes pride in serving our community. Lillian's career changed into law enforcement as a dream come true. With this, said Lillian states, "I am eternally grateful for the opportunity to work for such an amazing police department, coworkers, bosses, and community. I have witnessed the City of Sierra Madre and our police department evolve in the past year and I look forward to continuing to be part of that growth." Lillian Shaw. Dispatcher Erin Butler, raise your hand. So Erin was born on Friday, June 13th. She wanted me to know that, she wanted you to know that, she was born on Friday. To Deidra and Philip Butler. Erin has two brothers, Philip Junior and Myron. In 2009, she gave birth to her daughter, Marley. Marley is now nine years old and in third grade, loves to swim and do gymnastics, and is so excited about going to fourth grade in August. When Erin was pregnant with her daughter, she knew she had a bigger purpose in life but was unsure what she wanted to do with herself. She went to college on and off and had jobs in customer service, but knew that this field was not what she really wanted. Erin started off interested in becoming a firefighter, imagine that. So on her days off, so on her days off from the regular job, she would spend time at the fire department doing ride-alongs. Erin did that for about three years. During that time, she enrolled in an EMT program. Erin then enrolled in the fire technology program at Santa Ana College. While there, Erin also took a criminal justice course and a post-dispatcher course because of her interest in becoming a dispatcher as well. With being a full-time mom, a full-time student, taking care of her sickly mother, Erin had a full plate. Erin's mom eventually passed away, but with perseverance, dedication, a lot of hard work, Erin overcame life's challenges and succeeded in her dreams. Erin raised a successful and ambitious young daughter. She finished school with 3.2 GPA, received her EMT and post-dispatcher certificates, and is now a police dispatcher for the City of Sierra Madre. On July 23rd of this year, she will celebrate her one-year anniversary with the city. Officer Carolina Hermio. Carolina Hermio was born on October 27th in Medellin, Colombia. Did I say that right? Medellin, Colombia. Her family came to the United States in March of 1994 when Carolina was about seven years old and raised in the City of Covina, California. She attended Beddila Elementary School, Royal Oak Middle School, and Charter Oak High School, where Carolina played varsity soccer all four years. After graduating from high school, Carolina decided to further her educational career by attending a community college. In fall of 2006, she enrolled at Citrus College and majored in liberal arts and science with an emphasis in administration of justice. Ultimately, she graduated from Citrus College with her Associate of Science degree in 2009. Carolina attended Cal State University of Fullerton and Westwood College, earning her Bachelor of Science degree. She graduated from Rio Hondo College Police Academy in May of 2016. Carolina Hermio. If we could just take a quick picture with the council?
Sure.
Thank you.
And as half of our audience leaves, I would like to say councilmember Kapocha and I have the And as half of our audience leaves, I would like to say councilmember Capochi and I had the opportunity to go to Lillian Shaw's graduation, when she graduated from the police academy, and it was absolutely amazing. And if any of our council members have a chance to do that again, I would highly recommend it. It was... It's quite emotional to see all these young people taking the oath to protect us. Okay, we're going to go on to the consent calendar now.
Goodbye, our crowd.
City manager?
Thank you, mayor. We have three items on consent this evening. Item A, Treasurer's Report, quarter ending March 31st, 2018. Item B, Extension of Audit Services Agreement. Item C, Adoption of Resolution 1823 of the City Council of the City of Sierra Madre Approving Certain Demands.
Do we have any questions about any of the items A, B, or C? Do we want to take them all separately? Any questions or comments on A? Mayor Protem?
Not on A.
Do we have any questions on number B, Extension of Audit Service Agreement? Nothing from here. Mayor Protem?
Nope.
Item number C, Adoption of Resolution 1823 of the City Council of the City of Sierra Madre Approving Certain Demands.
I just had one question. If the city manager could just explain what the $35,000 and change for the Raymond Bay assessment is?
Yes, Mayor Protem. The $35,000 is an annual fee we pay based on our pumping allocation, and it's paid from the water fund.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Mayor Protem?
It did. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we take this to public comment? Are there any public comment on items A, B, and C? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Any discussion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And unanimous. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a discussion, Consideration of Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Assessment Districts, Engineers Report, and Resolution of Intention 1824. And who's going to be providing it for us?
Director Samino.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Evening.
Members of the council. Tonight, I have Kev Charcutian here, our contract city engineer, to give his engineering report for the assessment districts. If you have any questions, I'll be right here.
Okay, don't go too far.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This item is the Annual Approval of the Assessment District Charges. Staff's recommendation tonight is to keep the assessment charges unchanged from last year's. The approval of the assessment is a two-phase process. The first phase being tonight's resolution of intention, and the second phase being a public hearing and a resolution confirming the assessments. There are a total of eight districts within the city. Three lighting districts in the downtown, two sewer districts, one community facility district, and one landscaping, and one parking district. All charges proposed for next fiscal year will remain unchanged. At last year's council meeting, staff introduced a proposal to consolidate all districts into one single district. And in that process, to effectuate reductions in the current rate applied to all parcels within the different districts. The city council last year authorized a feasibility study for the consolidation of these districts. Staff has completed the data collection portion of the feasibility study and has analyzed different strategies for cost savings for the downtown lighting districts specifically, and has been coordinating the effort with the city attorney's office. The process of consolidating districts is complex due to the several statutes which established these districts. Each district was established by a separate statute, starting in the 1960s, to the most recent one, which was established in 2012. Each statute is analyzed and researched for clauses pertaining to abandonment and the consolidation of districts. Once the legal framework for these districts is reviewed, staff will then develop a plan of action and submit it to the city council for review. Tonight's staff recommendation is that the city council approve the engineers' report, adopt Resolution 18-24. It's set June 12th, 2018, as a date for a public hearing. If there's any questions from council, we'd be glad to answer.
Do I have any questions for the engineer?
The June 12th date is to consider the recommendations?
No, that's the second phase of the existing districts. We are not making any changes this year.
So this recommendation is to just keep everything the same until... Okay.
Yeah. It's a complex thing we're doing, so we want to make sure we do it right the first time.
Got it.
Any other questions up here? Mayor Protem?
No questions. Thank you.
Do we want to hear a public comment? Anybody? Going once. Okay. Bringing it back to council. It's your pleasure.
I'll just comment. I am looking forward to the consolidation. I didn't realize how... The complexity of it and the length of time, but I am confident that for next year, we can see a proposal for that and what that would look like.
Thank you. Anybody else? So do you need a motion from us, or we're bringing it back on June 12th for a public hearing? Do you need anything else?
I believe we just need... Is that correct? Just to bring it back for a public hearing, or is there a motion necessary?
Well, you need it... You do need a motion to adopt the resolution.
So, mayor, with that resolution, if you could adopt the districts as listed in Item Two of the staff report. It appears we inadvertently left one off in the resolution, and then we can correct that when we come back in.
Okay, that was a lot of words. So we're going to entertain a motion for the resolution, but instead of the districts listed in the resolutions, we're going to use those listed under Item Two on the agenda, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. I'm sorry, who was the motion?
I made the motion.
Councilmember Garth.
Were you impressed that I was able to recite back to you what you said?
I really was.
It's been a long day. I'm impressed with myself, too. Alrighty, item number three, our library survey results. Finally, we've been wanting these. Who's going to talk to us about it tonight?
That'll be me, mayor. And we've created a brief PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
So this has been a lengthy process which we started, but it is because we administered the survey to every residential household in Sierra Madre. It was a little over 4,900. Of that, we had a 37% response rate, which is fantastic, and it led to a margin of error of plus or minus 2%, which again is very good. And when we get into the options that people, residents, supported strongly or somewhat, we were asked to remind the public that strong supporter opposition is unlikely to change, whereas somewhat supporting an option is seen to be persuadable. So when we tried to categorize which of the four questions fell into each category, we gave more weight to the strong supporter opposition by the residents. So first off, it is amazing how many people use our library. 75% of the people that responded used the library at least one to two times a month. But it's more than one in three, 34%, use it three times or greater per month. And Jill, who I think I saw here... I'm not sure if Christine's here. When they saw these numbers, they were ecstatic. This is fantastic. It shows the library we have is doing a very good job of meeting its mission and serving the community. So to recap the options that we asked residents to respond to. Option number one was move the library from its current location to the community center. Option number two was keep the library at its current location, move programs to other locations, and sell the adjoining lot to pay for structural improvements. Three was keep the library at its current location, enhance and expand programs, and fund increased services and structural improvements with a property tax. And four was keep the library at its current location, reduce services, and limit public access. Do not sell any land or increase taxes. Staff referred to this one as the no-no-no option, because that's all it was. So what we found is residents support option number two. And we'll go through the numbers in a minute. It's the only option of the four that residents supported. They somewhat opposed moving the library from its current location to the community center and expanding services. They also somewhat opposed, but to a lesser degree of opposition, keeping the library at its current location, enhancing and expanding services, and funding improvements with a tax increase. And the no-no-no went down in flames. So option two, keep the library at its current location. Again, looking at the strong support to strong opposition, you see a net strong support of 10%. You see an overall net support of 18%. This was the only option to have net strong support and net somewhat in strong support. It also had the lowest opposition, strong opposition, of any of the options we asked the residents to look at. Option number two, move the library from its current location to the community center and expand services. We said it's somewhat opposed. It had a net strong opposition of 15. Net overall opposition or net support of negative 8%, as I've written it up there. Option three, keep the library at its current location, enhance services, and fund improvements with a tax increase, had... Was opposed by a net of 7%, with a net overall opposition of negative 1%. In rounding, this is actually less than 1%. It had a net opposition of like 0.2. But that's how we rounded it. And the reason we included this instead of neutral, as somewhat opposed, as we know in California, it's 2/3 for a property tax increase. So to successfully pass a property tax for this option, 100% of the strong supporters would have to vote for it. 20% of people who... Or 100% of the somewhat supporters would have to vote for it. 100% of the somewhat opposed would have to vote for it. An additional like 10% of the strongly opposed would also have to support it. So based on that and the negatives overall, we moved that to somewhat opposed. And then the no-no-no, that's what strong opposition looks like, which, along with the use numbers, made us feel pretty good. The second question that we asked for feedback on was how important are a number of characteristics of a 21st century library, materials, programs, flexible space, technology, and archives? And what we found, if we look at the far-right column of combining essential and very important together, there is a strong support for most of these programs. Technology lags a little bit, but it is a majority of the people. If we narrow the scope a little bit to talk about the services, essential services that people see that we can provide at a library, we see that books are the most strongly supported, with that being the only option where a majority of people feel they're essential, but also support for archives, programs, and flexible space. Promotion of technology finished the lowest across the board. So in summary, a majority of residents support services which include an up-to-date collection of materials and moving select programs from the library to other locations in the city, and selling the back or adjacent lot to pay for library repairs. And a majority of residents do not support moving the library to a new location, a significant reduction in services, or a parcel tax to pay for a new library or enhanced services. With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Do you have questions?
You do? We will take questions here at the council. Thank you, city manager, for that report.
Okay, on the slide where it says library survey results, and the question... The option three is keeping the library at its current location, enhancing and expanding services, and funding improvements with a tax increase. I just wonder what people understood the enhancing and expanding services and what that meant to them. Some people might think that means a new library. Others might think it's just, you know, just fixing it up a little bit and expanding services. And I wonder if that question was posed differently, if the response would have been different, you know?
I think trying to determine the intent of people who are looking at a multi-part question. The filter you're going to use is probably the value system that you put on it.
Yeah.
It was intentionally asked as a multi-part question. And we tried our best during community outreach on the transparency portal and in meetings to explain to the best of the ability what each option meant. But because they're multi-parts, we were cautioned against accepting one part of a three-part question and rejecting another part of it, and instead to take it as a whole.
Okay, the other thing is the frequency of library use. It appears that 75% of the people in town use the library. But I'm just wondering if that number is skewed just by people that don't use the library may not have been inclined to even respond to the survey.
So there is typically non-response bias that we talked about in the process, but we still had a random selection, even though it went to every household, because members of the household randomly selected who filled it out. So we say that that is statistically significant to a plus or minus 2%. So we're inclined to believe that our library actually does get that much use.
75% use the library. Okay, that is impressive, yeah. Okay.
I have a question with respect to the responses received. I myself was impressed with 37%, 1,700 responses. Is there... Did NRC comment at all as what the expected response rate is in this type of survey in a municipality?
Yeah, they did. They said the response rate was pretty high. And our... When we first put it out, we were hoping for a 20% response rate to get to the validity score that we needed. And I believe after the first wave of surveys came back, everything else on top of it was just additional, because we hit it early on. But they said that we had a very engaged citizenry here.
20% is... Was the expected to be able to confirm?
I think, I believe 20% was our goal. We didn't have an expected, but we did have a minimum threshold that we needed to make sure that the plus or minus number wasn't, you know, 8% or something that would be hard to draw conclusions from.
Any other questions? Mayor Protem, do you have any questions at this time?
Yeah, I do. City manager, first of all, thank you. On page 13 of the presentation, I think, I think the second column where it says "service is essential", and then it says "essential and very important", I think it should be "or very important", correct?
Yes.
I mean, essentially...
That's just intended to show that we're combining the categories.
Okay, I just think it's a little confused. I just think we want to make clear that the "service is essential", that's essentially the top, you know, the most, you know, priority, if you will. When something is essential or very important, that's basically grouping in a larger... A larger response, and that some people within there actually don't put as much priority on the service, correct? So, just so I'm interpreting this correct, if someone is saying "service is essential", that's just... That's saying, yes, we want that no matter what. If they're saying something's very important, you know, they're obviously less enthusiastic about it. So when I first read this, it was just confusing to me as to how these two numbers, the two columns, compared. So I guess I ask that because the question is like, what do we do with... If someone thinks something's very important, I don't really know what that is, right? I mean, I know what "essential" means. That means that they say... They're basically telling us that no matter what, we want that as part of our library. And, you know, if you look at the responses, the only one that passed the 50% mark is the collection of materials. So to me, that means, you know, that is obviously something that we continue... Continually need to provide. Whereas the other groups here, the local history, archives, et cetera, you know, the "essential" category, you know, none of those actually got past the 50%. So, you know, can you just... Can you confirm that I'm supposed to be looking at these numbers?
Yes, Mayor Protem, that's correct. If we looked at the Leichert scale, how the question was asked, "service is essential" would be one, "very important" would be two, "somewhat important" would be three, "not important at all" would be four. And how you're describing it is how we attempted to narrow our focus. The question was... The question was, what services do the residents need in a library? So we included both of them. But if we have to narrow our focus to what is essential, we saw the response, just as you said, that collection of materials was the only item that received a majority support. And if you look in the cross tab, some of the other items actually play out, I think to the greater point you're trying to make where programs for all ages are supported, but they're supported only at an essential level in the library at 38%, where people are willing to move them to other locations. And actually, the most preferred response of parents with children under 18 was the supported option to move programs to other locations, but continue them, just not necessarily at the library. So you explained it much better than my slide did. Thank you.
No, thanks. Okay, that's helpful.
Sorry, and I'm just going to ask for clarification on that. So for the first item, collection of materials, it's 55% is service is essential. You add very important, which would be the difference of 23%. So you combined it, so it's 78%.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
So just to be clear, when we're adding very important to essential, we're, we have residents who value highly all these services.
Correct. There's a, well, we tried to show is there's a broad base of support for library services, but if we narrow our focus to what is essential for a library here, it shows nicely with the rest of the results that we had. So people do support the library services that are provided. They do use the library a lot. But again, when we look at what is essential to the mission of the library in Sierra Madre, as our residents look at it, it really does become narrowed.
A question for you, City Manager. The length of time that we had to have the surveys back, was it about five weeks?
Oh, man. I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm not, I don't remember. I think it was a little longer than that. We did two waves, and I want to say six to seven weeks, but I'd have to go back and look.
So my question is, did we get most of our responses in the early wave and then we had some trickle in, or do you believe it was?
The actual, how they came in was mostly in the first wave, and then we had a good portion in the second wave as well.
Okay.
And after we received the draft report, we received a couple more that trickled in. They actually didn't cut off the responses until just before the final report was issued.
Okay, all right, good.
So in, I mean, to answer your question, all, they probably had three months because there wasn't a cutoff.
Okay, thank you.
You were able to establish that 20% within the first wave?
I believe so, yes.
Any other questions from council? If not, I'll open it up for a public comment. Would anybody like to comment on our survey results? And just before you begin, the complete report can be found on the website, our NRC report.
And, yes, Mayor, we're also, we'll upload it to the transparency portal and put it in our next eBlast communication as well as a link so everyone can see the results that weren't able to download it in the packet.
And it's very interesting, actually, if you like survey results and statistics, it's actually an interesting thing. All righty, Mr. Proctor, how are you tonight?
I'm pretty good. How are you doing?
We're doing good.
Well, naturally, the library trustees were very interested in this survey. And we want to thank the citizens of Sierra Madre for their enthusiastic response. And we especially want to thank the citizens of Sierra Madre for the support. It was gratifying to see that letting the library drift slowly into oblivion was the least option. So, you know, and, I mean, I want to kind of frame this up to say, what's the headline here? Well, first of all, the headline is 75% of the people of Sierra Madre come to the library once, at least once or twice a month. That is a really astonishing statistic. I mean, talk about civic participation and enthusiastic, engaged citizenry who love the library. That's a great place to start building. The support for a 21st century library, I know it was, there's some mix in there, but more than 50% want the collection to be up to date. They want it to be, they want there to be a program where they know they're going to come in and get the latest and greatest things. And the way we sort of think about this, actually, we're going to meet tomorrow to talk about this, but the way I sort of think about this is that this is a great place to start a conversation. Most of the people use the library and they want a 21st century library. And we've got a pretty good definition of what that is. It's a place where they get the best, the most up-to-date materials. It's a place where they can have civic meetings, a place of engagement. It's a place where they can discover new technology. And I sort of framed up just a brief series of questions. If we were to start this conversation, what would the conversation be like? The questions I wrote down were, what kind of a library will serve the city of Sierra Madre for the next 60 years? What kind of a library do we want to have in the year 2075? And what will the world look like then? What kind of a library can we create that will become a center of civic pride and make Sierra Madre a place even more, even more popular place to live? It's one thing to take the library and, you know, renovate it, that'd be great. But if you were to dream of a place, and that place would be the kind of a place where somebody who wants to live here saw it and said, wow, they're making a statement there, that's a place, if they have that commitment to it, that's a place where I want to live. What kind of a library can create that will address the needs of a world that, that doesn't yet exist? 20 years ago, there was no such thing as the internet, you know? I mean, the way a library, the, we are, want to create a library for the next 60 years, and what kind of world are we going, is that library going to continue to serve its patrons? So, I mean, this is, basically what I want to have is what I would call a courageous conversation about, you know, we know most people use the library, we know there's a lot of enthusiasm for it, you know, what's possible? I mean, I used to work for the Walt Disney Company, and Walt Disney once said, "All our dreams can come true if we have the courage to pursue them." So we had to figure out, what is the dream and how do we pursue it? And this is a great place to start. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tony Buckner, Sierra Madre resident. I just want to address the option two because that did come out the most favorable. And, you know, it, when I read the question as a person who received it in my home, I thought, well, this is a pipe dream because it's the amount of money available from option two, which is to sell the back lot and to fund the project without any tax increase for the front, which even considering there would be fundraising. The problem is, is that there is a major driveway in the back. And I assume that whole lot was taken into account as an entirety when the assessment of it was done. That was, I forget the amount, but it was between $1 and $2 million. Well, if you kept the library at the same square footage and at a cost of 250 square feet, you're well over $2 million. And there's, it doesn't quite meet that standard. If you were to cut that, take that lot in its entirety and sell the whole thing without the easement in the back, how are you going to get people in and out of the library parking lot? I don't know how. We, I, when I started working at the library, it was a dead end and people really, there were more hazards. There wasn't a real place for people to walk to the front door. There's no entrance from the back. And you've just cut a lot of parking, which impacts the neighborhood, it impacts the library patrons, and it impacts pedestrian walkway, and it impacts the safety of vehicles traveling in the area. So when I read the question, I thought, well, if I was a resident of Sierra Madre who loves the library, that I have family and I have commitments, which option might I take? I'm going to take that option number two. And when I read that question, I thought, that's unfortunate. I felt like it shouldn't have been there. And I just wanted to share my feelings. I know I shared them at a public meeting once, and I wanted to get it on record for a city council. People donate for dreams. They donate to a big picture. People have donated to that library over and over and over again to put another Band-Aid on it. This ADA issue isn't a Band-Aid. It's major. And I so respect you all for taking it on because it's not an easy task. But the survey has shown us the passion this community has for its library, and it always has since the late 1800s, and it will in the future unless it's such a sad place to go. Where would you, where would you make those changes? Take out all the oak trees? That is a possibility to go out front. Those are issues, that's another little thing that Sierra Madreans love is our trees. You know, so those are things that I just wanted to point out and get on record. And I thank you for putting this on the agenda, for taking the time to put it out as a survey, and for allowing me and everyone else to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to talk about the, this item?
Good evening, Mayor Delmar and council members. I am Barry Gold, 441 Ramona Avenue. I find that the results of the library survey are a little confusing to me. I don't quite know how to handle a response of somewhat supports or somewhat opposes. It's like asking someone, do you want to move the library and sell the land to pay for the cost of the moving? And they say, maybe. Or do you want to keep the library where it is, raise taxes to fix up the building? And they say, possibly. Answers like this are somewhat helpful. But if I were asked what I would support, I would first say, show me the cost of each option, not estimates. Show me detailed written proposals. Then I could make an intelligent decision. But I'm not here tonight to try to make sure that we all know exactly what we're getting into before we jump in. I'm here tonight to say, no matter what the results of the survey is, I oppose selling any city land without replacing that property with the proceeds of the sale. Land here in Sierra Madre is just too precious. The day will come in the not-too-distant future that we will need that land for something that none of us today can envision. And if we have sold part or all of it, we'll never be able to replace it. And the people of Sierra Madre will then look back at this time and wonder, how could we have done something so foolish? Thank you.
We're still on the library item. Anybody have another public comment?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Gina Fryman. As a, as a member of the planning commission for a long time, we spend a lot of time thinking about geography. Essentially, that's what we do. We think about where things are and why they are where they are. And I think the interesting thing that this survey told us was that people were really strongly opposed to moving the library to the park. And I just would like to express my extreme disapproval of that idea for a wide variety of reasons. One, because parkland is valuable and scarce. And I think it's really extremely essential not to take away any of that land from buildings and especially for additional parking, which it would need if it were moved to that location. The library in that location is also a really less, even though it seems not that much farther from the center of town, it's in a very less densely populated area and it's much less convenient for a lot of people to get to. And so I think that, that the population certainly oppose that in general. I'm one of the people who strongly supported a tax. I believe in paying taxes for things that I get. I think taxes are good, and I would be very happy to pay higher taxes to keep the library where it is. And I also would personally make a very sizable donation to keep the library where it is. And I think there are a lot of people in Sierra Madre who would do that. And I think that has to be an essential part of looking at how we keep the library where it is and bring it up to the very important codes for the ADA and also to serve, to serve the people who obviously love our library. And I also think another thing about the location about, is how it's close to the elementary school. And if you can build a lot for books and libraries and kids when they're young, it lasts. It, it's something that my daughter, who's in her 20s, has recently discovered the public library again and remembers how much, it's so great. She can go there and get books for free and stuff. And I think that we really need to find a way to support the library and keep it where it is. I think it shows that that's what people in town.
Do I have anybody else who wishes to talk about this item? Come on down. Hi.
Margaret Quigley on North Auburn. And I'll, well, some of you know it, but I am the president of the Friends of the Sierra Madre Library this year. And I just want, I mean, the survey is a survey, it's done, you have the results, but, so I would like to just comment on a couple of things about the survey that I suppose a survey can't cover, but which people didn't have a chance to think about when they answered those questions. And number one is that every survey done in any city in this country has showed both direct and non-direct economic benefits to a library. So when you're spending money to improve it, you get that back in some way. Individual people in the city do by using it, and the city can get economic benefits too. The second thing that wasn't covered in that survey, which I feel strongly about for the staff, when you're moving programs around the city, did the people, no, they couldn't have, recognize the difficulty that it would put on the staff to schedule those programs in what are already limited spaces, I mean, space available, whether it's the parkhouse or the rec center? And they realize the difficulty that it would be to the staff to haul supplies around to have those programs and to get them set up and to get them taken down? And did they realize that a split staff, when you're sending staff out to do things, means that you need more staff just to keep the library open and we're not exactly overstaffed as it is? And the third, let's see, third thing I want to say is that library is more precious than that back lot. The back lot was purchased for the city, by the city, for the use of the library in some way. That was the sole reason it's purchased. It's not some sacred thing that the library, the people have said they value the library and they're willing to sell the back lot. It's not some sacred space that, who cares what we might need in 50 years? People have said that they want to take care of the library now. So that's it for now.
Thank you.
I just have a short comment. Patricia Hall, 382 East Montecito. There was one question I would have liked to seen on the survey, and that would be the option of building a new library. And as far as the tax is concerned, I realize that you do have to have 2/3 majority to pass the tax initiative, but I think maybe if we phrase it as an investment in the community and make it very clear that it is an investment in the community by helping the library either build or expand, and maybe we need to sell it as an investment in the community and not just a tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Shannon King. I'm a member of the library board of trustees. And I think I second a lot of the comments from my fellow trustee members. We will be discussing this at our meeting tomorrow night. We're excited to see these results. We would welcome the opportunity to have further discussion, if we could, with you as we're learning through this process what all of this means. I think with each option, there's more, there's more color that can be shared as we're learning. For example, selling the back lot, while it might give some funding to help with some of these ADA repairs and needed improvements... of these ADA repairs and needed improvements, it would actually then, I think, take away from some of the collection. We'd be losing space. We'd be making wider aisles. So if people want more collections, more activities, we might not have that just by selling the back lot. So I think there's different ways to look at each of these options and to really dig into it more. And thank you so much for your time for doing that, and I hope we can continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council. And city manager, we are planning a joint meeting with the library, aren't we?
Yes, Mayor. I'll be at the trustees' meeting tomorrow. And we were going to tentatively propose the first regular council meeting in July with no other items on the agenda other than, like, paying the bills. So, but we have to get the okay from the trustees as well.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to council for comment, discussion, direction.
Well, I'll go first. I am looking very much forward to the meeting with the trustees. And, you know, first of all, I'm just really pleased that we've made the decision to do the survey. I mean, it told us a lot. Okay, number one, there is support for the library. Doing nothing is not an option, which, you know, is always not an option for me as well. And just the low level of support for moving the library. Yeah, and I don't really know too much, you know, based on the questions, because the question did not specifically say, as was mentioned, about building a new library. So we need to really talk through that. And, you know, the Library Board of Trustees and the Friends of the Library are much more heavily invested in this than I am as a councilperson. So I'm really looking forward to that discussion, to see what kind of thoughts they have. And we'll talk about all kinds of things, about how we manage the library, what, you know, what budget constraints we have in Sierra Madre, and just try to really dig in depth as to where we want to go with this. I mean, the way I view it is, this is probably, for me, the most important decision in my so far six years on the council that we're going to make. And I do want to think strategically into the future, although I'm not able to think out to 2070 or 2065. I mean, I'm not even going to be alive then, but we really need to take, to think about the future with this. So I'm looking forward to that meeting.
Anybody else?
I do think that you stated the case very well, that the survey was obviously very well done, and I think it's tremendous information. We've all been kind of stabbing in the dark about, well, where is the public here? Where is the public there? It is an imperfect survey in many ways, but I think that we can process it along with the Board of Trustees and come up with a solution that'll work for our community. I think that city manager put it well when he said that when you look through these numbers, you look through the numbers with a certain kind of filter. And we all have filters. I've been involved off and on with the Library Board since, for six years, off and on, and I've had many conversations with many of them. I'm fully aware of the fact that our leaders in this community have had a project for a new library in the offing for many years, at least 20 years. And there's been just one discussion after another and a rediscussion, and ultimately, a decision is not made and a can is kicked down the road. And I really do agree with Councilmember Capocha that when we're hashing this out, I think we ought to be talking about that new library as a potential option. And given the constraints of public opinion, given the constraints of fiscal, you know, fiscal reality, but I do believe we need to be talking about that in the mix before we make a decision. I did like what our Board members said. I thought Board Member Proctor was right on task. I think I made a note, what's possible, you know? And he said something to the effect that communities are, kind of get an idea of themselves by the values that they have and the visions that they share with each other. And I think we ought to be talking like that, right? And we ought to be thinking like that. And I'm on the, I'm a liaison to the Board of Trustees for the council, so I will be at that meeting tomorrow. And I'm kind of anxious to hear what you all are going to say. And I agree. I think a joint meeting between us and the Board of Trustees should be very fruitful. I look forward to it.
Mayor, do you want Mayor? No, no, it's fine. You know, I agree with a lot that has been said already. I don't, I think it's important to note that we did not, we knew the survey was not going to be all-inclusive and to answer all of the questions. It was intended to be, to take a pulse of the community. And I know initially, when we spoke about it, we talked about maybe even half of the households getting the survey, and we really pushed for as many households as possible, about 4,900 households, to get the surveys out too. So again, it's intended to get a pulse of what the community, what residents, their response to some of these issues that we want to deal with, with the library. There's two things that are probably not my top priorities as I'm thinking about where these discussions will go, and I also am interested in a joint meeting. But one is ensuring that we have safety in the existing building, whether it's now and whatever we choose to do with it in the future. But knowing that we have, the ADA issues are a concern. I know roof, we've been able to do some kind of Band-Aids to it, and there are other Band-Aids that we've been able to put up at the library. But we really need to take a look at overall safety of it. And secondly is what operations of the library will look like, and how we're able to maintain that in our budget, and what we're willing to allocate to the operations of the library. And so obviously, this is a bigger discussion. Personally, there are a lot of things that I am responding to in this survey, but I definitely want to make sure we have a larger discussion at this joint meeting. And this survey, we're hoping, for myself at least, is going to be a guide to hearing what residents are saying. And I actually haven't heard from other residents. Sometimes when this comes up, I feel like I'll get emails and phone calls, and on this issue, I have not. But maybe the survey itself was, that was the reach out. We'll see if we have any follow-up after either this meeting or the joint meeting. But I'm still interested to see if there are other creative ways of looking at this. At the end of the day, we do have a funding issue, and where we get that funding to either improve the existing facility and/or expand it, we still have the operational dollars that we'll have to consider too, in whichever direction we move in.
Mayor Potem, do you have any comment?
Yeah, quickly. I mean, I think the survey is very well done, great starting place. And for me, I agree with, you know, everything that I call it. I continue to think that a parcel tax for significantly improving or rebuilding the library would probably pass, even with a third vote. I've thought that for quite some time, and I think the survey hasn't really knocked me off that pedestal yet. But I look forward to meeting with the trustees. I'm not quite sure that we'll go down the parcel tax route, but I think it is definitely, and we should still entertain the, you know, the somewhat, the opposition in the survey. So, well done to staff for getting this done.
Thank you. Sure.
Mr. City Manager, how do you see this kind of playing out as far as getting to a decision as to what direction to proceed? I mean, we'll meet with the Board of Trustees, and is, are you expecting a decision to come out of that, or?
Councilmember Capocha, I think the survey and the discussions we've had around it did a good job of, in staff's opinion, eliminating options. So there doesn't appear to be the no-no-no option eliminated. Moving to the community center appears to be eliminated. What we are hoping for is discussion on the type of library we want and how we can realistically fund that. So what we're hoping, when both bodies meet, they can have a conversation both about what the library could be, while also dealing in the reality of not only the building has to be paid for, if there was to be a new library, but operations within the building have to be paid for long-term. It's council's discretion determining if we're going to go after a parcel tax, or sell the back lot, or take a break for fundraising. What staff will do in the interim is what we have to do to make sure the building is safe and ADA compliant, and that's regardless of any path we go down. So for staff, the decision we want, I think we've heard tonight, is we know where the library is going to be, and it's up to both bodies to decide what type of library is going to be there.
So after we meet in July, do you, are you expecting direction from that meeting? Or is it going to come back to council one more time for final direction, or?
If we're speculating, I would hope the bodies would be able to reach a direction at that meeting. Not necessarily a decision, but a direction where we can go, and until something stops us, that's the direction we'll go.
Okay. So when we have that meeting, we're going to need, we're going to have to talk in depth about a lot of these issues that are just floating below the radar right now. Operational costs going forward, transition, if we were to build a new library, how do we get from where we're at now till then? And so you'll be ready to help us talk through those issues, or?
Oh, you are.
My fear is that it's just, it's a big thing, and I'm just wondering if we're going to be able to get through it in one meeting.
No, that's what, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I do have a suggestion. So I don't think that we're going to make a decision on July 22nd whether or not we're going to have a new library or not. What we really need to do is approach this as our current state, what we need to do and what we hope to be able to do. So there has to be some different stages, and we need to have our city staff bring back all those operating costs, you know, what we need to do, what we can do now in the next three months, the next nine months, the next year. You know, if we do decide to go down the path of building a new library, it's not going to happen overnight. You know, what are we going to do with the library when we have to close it to repair it? So there's a lot of different avenues that we need to go down, and we can't make just a big one, right? So we need to really look at where we are now, what we need to do, how we can continue to the services that we are giving now, that our residents really like, and then building forward. So we'll need to gradually go in that, and I hope that you'll learn some tomorrow night from the Board of Trustees. And then when we get ready to set our joint meeting, I would like to meet with the chair and myself to set the agenda, so we make sure that we hit all those topics.
Mayor, on that point, just to clarify, I agree, what staff is hoping for is a direction, using the example of if we want to explore seriously building a new library, that's going to take an exceptional amount of work that we won't be prepared to talk about in depth at that meeting, but we can come back with. So what we're hoping is, after seeing everything and talking, the direction is, go research this and come back with it.
Yeah, well, because there are some immediate needs that we need to take care of.
I agree.
That we can't do. Anything else? Do you all have enough direction, their staff, for us?
Yes, Mayor.
All righty. Are you guys okay? Do you need a break? Are we doing all right? Some hit rare. Here is my agenda. What's next? Our water, right? Why don't we take about a three-minute break as some of our people leave? And we'll get ready for the water presentation.
Oh, that is so cool.
Mayor Potem, we're waiting for one council member to get back.
The one that gave, has like the Happy's Liquor store in the background. I'm like, who just picked it for Happy's?
Because of the evil son. I love that evil son.
Happy's Liquor, we know.
Look at the, I tell people, look at the bookmark, the very well-done one, and then you put my evil son in it, and it just changes the whole dynamic of that bookmark.
Keep going with that happy son.
This girl was eight who did this?
Wow, very talented, yeah.
Well, actually Christine said she had to interview her mom separately to make sure. But yeah, she's legit smart.
I didn't know the age when I picked it, so I'm just saying.
I mean, eight years old, that's awesome.
Yeah.
We're just waiting for the return of one of our wandering council members, and we can get started with our last item.
We're just waiting for the return of one of our wandering council members so we can get started with our last item.
Mayor Potem, are you still with us?
I'm here, thank you.
He doesn't sound excited as he did a couple hours ago.
Very excited.
Oh, there you go. Alrighty. And our last agenda item tonight is our implementation of Proposition 218 process for water and sewer rate adjustments. So this should be good times, huh? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, staff seeks council to adopt or approve four different items. The first will be to adopt the draft City of Sierra Madre Comprehensive Water and Wastewater Cost of Service Study. Number two will be to direct staff to initiate the Proposition 218 notification and protest ballot process based on the recommendations of the Comprehensive Water and Wastewater Cost of Service Study. Number three will be to review and approve the supporting documents for the Prop 218 process comprised of the official protest ballot, the guidelines for submission and tabulation of the protest. And number four will be to set July 24th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. at Sierra Madre City Hall for the public tabulation of protest, and July 24th, 2018 at 6:30 p.m. at Sierra Madre City Hall for the public hearing as required by Proposition 218 process. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Habib Isaac from Raptalis, who has a presentation on the water, wastewater study.
Thank you, Jose. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable City Councilmembers, staff, and the public. My name is Habib Isaac of Raptalis. I'm a senior manager, and I worked with the City of Sierra Madre last time, and here I am again for an update. One unique thing, it sets rates for every five years, so you always have to do this periodically, and you can't just let it go on autopilot. And can everyone hear me okay? I just want to make sure. So you have a report in front of you, which is pretty thorough. It's a very comprehensive cost service update for water and wastewater. And then this just pretty much summarizes what's in the report. But in total, let's see here. In total, what we're talking about after I go through the summary is, you know, let's just get to the end. The water, the water rates we're looking at is a, will be an increase of $10 a month, and then the sewer is going up by just less than a dollar a month, essentially. So in total, that's what we're looking at. But I'll go through the presentation of what we have before you. So we start with some key assumptions. The first one is, in fiscal '18, the one we're ending right now, your budget revenue for the water utility was roughly 5.2 million. And the goal is to maintain that 5.2 million in fiscal '19. So that's the goal, revenue neutral. And then just to update the base rates, recalibrate them to make sure that they're up to date based on most current usage information, and to show that they do still generate $5.2 million. And one thing we're doing with that is updating the tiers and then also establishing an infrastructure fixed charge for the water enterprise. One other thing to point out with enterprises, water is a separate enterprise, so is sewer. So it does not, it shouldn't need any type of general fund dollars. It needs to be run as its own self-sufficient enterprise fund with user fees. And now some of the key assumptions. In 2018, the water enterprise reserve balance was 747,000. Depreciation is just around 750,000. We use that as a target to know how much revenue you should have in your reserves for your capital improvements on an annual basis. And your annual CIP expenses currently is turning around 305,000. So what that tells us is that you're not keeping up with your depreciation. But that could also be just the fact, there's only so much you could do in a year with your staff and contracts, things of that sort. And we have your debt incorporated as well. With your accounts, we have roughly 3,800, close to 3,900 meters in the service area. And then in terms of your water supplies, you know, you're in adjudicated water basin. So you have a certain amount of groundwater that you're allowed to pump. It's 980 acre-feet per year currently, and that's when it's less, the basin is less than 500 feet. When it gets over that threshold, then you get more of an allotment. It basically doubles, but it doesn't seem without you get to that threshold in the foreseeable future, at least not for this next planning period of the next five years. So we took that information to account for what's the amount of water you have available to generate the tiers. And then the supplemental water is accounted for for what you purchase from NWD. And that cost for this next fiscal year is identified as $400 per acre foot, which actually is a really good rate in relation to what others are paying for NWD water. And then for future years in our modeling, we assume that those water rate, the imported water cost is going up by 5%. And then you're allowed to, any increase that's not from the city but from an outside agency such as NWD, you're allowed to pass that just directly through to your customers because it's not a cost that you have control over. I have your existing rates showing here. We have by meter size, and then we have the tiers. And I mentioned we are recalibrating tiers to be more reflective of what your pumping rights are based on the adjudicated basin. So tier one is going to be your pumping rights for groundwater, and tier two is going to be your imported water. In terms of the current financials, this print is kind of small, but the main point here is to just show you, you have your revenues, and you'll see that's 5.2 million for '18. And then you also have your total expenses. And with your net income, you have a positive net income. And what we're trying to do is maintain that positive income. In the last study, we had to worry about debt service coverage, and rates had increased quite a bit to maintain that coverage. So now you're at a point where you're just wanting to continue to maintain where you are with that 5.2 million. And in future years, we're looking at just CPI indexes. So you kind of did that heavy lifting last time, and now we're looking at, you know, marginal increases in subsequent years of maybe 2%, 3% based on CPI. One thing we do with our, any type of water rate study that we do, we work on, we always want to take the new updated billing information and recalculate your revenue based on the usage that we see in the billing and the number of accounts by meter size. So we don't just take your budget number for, on face value. We recalculate the revenue to see what we come up with based on actual usage. And we compare it to your financials, and when we did that, we showed that we're just off by 2%. So that gives us a good comfort level that when we're projecting revenue moving forward, we have a good baseline to start with. If we were extremely off here, then we would think maybe we didn't have all the data from the billing information or something else is going on. But right now, because it's 2%, that makes us feel really good that we tie to your actuals. So your current financials with the base rates, you'll see that this green trend bar going across the graph, that's your current revenues. And then you see that they're not exceeding the bars, and you want to make sure these exceed the bars. So that's why we want to make sure that we, with all revenues, you're at 5.2 million. So we want to make sure that we maintain that. At the 5.2 million mark, now you're over those bars. That, the red that you see that is right above the bars, that's revenue above your operating that could go into your reserves and to fund your capital expenses. And you'll see you can maintain that pretty well. So really what you're looking at is, in future years, we're going to be right here of just CPI and your pass-through for any increase in water costs. So you're currently, you're in a strong financial position, and you just want to maintain that. And let me keep going here. And then one thing that we show here on this slide is your reserves. So with this increase in revenue that you see, you have a little bit of positive net income. That then allows you to fund your capital expenses, and then here's your reserve balance, and it's over your minimum. So with this amount over, you want to be within this range, but then you could do additional capital if you wish based on any type of deferred maintenance or any major project you want to take on. Once we know the amount of revenue we want to recover, we look at the total cost. We look at the, any type of offset revenues that you have, such as late charges, things of that sort. And then we look at what is your current cash balance. And one thing that we're establishing, as we show right here, as I mentioned, is that we're establishing infrastructure fixed charge to be part of your base rates. And that's going to generate just shy of $700,000 a year. And that's what generates that, $10 extra a month that I mentioned in the very beginning. So with the proposed fixed charges, we show what your current charges are, what the proposed is. And basically, we're right in line with where you are now. This is before the infrastructure fixed charge. So we want to make sure we're right around the same where you are. And then here are your proposed tier rates. We're consolidating the multiple tiers into two tiers. You'll notice that the tier width for tier one is 14 units of water, that's 100 cubic feet. And what we did there was we looked at how much of the groundwater is available if we apportion it evenly to all accounts. And if we did so, then every account is entitled to 14 units of water. Your groundwater has the ability to support that amount of demand. Once you get outside of that demand, that's why you'll see there's no imported water cost. Then, once you get over that amount, there's no more groundwater available, and then you're supplying that demand with imported water. And then we have groundwater recharge. Currently, you're buying more imported water at that low cost today to recharge your basin to potentially maybe get over that 500-feet threshold. Because if you do that, over time, this 14 units of water is going to be able to double, which means your tier one width will be able to expand to give your customers more, lower water costs over time. But again, that probably, that's a long-term plan, and it'll take a little bit of time to get there. So you'll see here that your current tier one rate is very, very similar to your, the proposed. The proposed rate is very close to the current tier one. And then the tier two is more than the blended rate of tier two, three, and four. So what we did was, we weighted it, and your tier two is 347, tier four is 555. So the 423 is basically a blend of these. And if you weighted it, it's 423 compared to 390. And then here's the infrastructure fixed charge. You'll see the number of accounts by meter size. So most of your meters are in this three-quarter, one-inch, but majority of them is all three, three-quarter or less. And this is where you'll see that that $21 ends up being $10 more a month. So when we look at the total fixed charge, we have what we, what I showed you earlier, that you're almost right around the same as where you are today, plus the infrastructure fixed charge. Comes out to 101. Your current is 7968 because it doesn't have that infrastructure charge. The difference 21, again, is basically that infrastructure charge to be able to fund your R and R, your repair and replacement of your existing assets. If you want, I could keep going wastewater, or if you want, I could also pause and answer any questions you have on the water side.
I have a quick question on the water side, if that's okay. Thank you for that presentation, a lot of information there, but obviously very detailed. Can you please share with me the reserves and how we establish a minimum and a maximum for our water reserve? Is that something that we, as city council, have decided and we establish that? Or is that a best practice?
Yeah, it's best practice. You, what we look at as a rate consultant and looking at water districts, it really depends on your frequency of your billing. So when you're looking at operating reserve, you want to have at least 60 days to 90 days as a minimum. And then based on your billing frequency, if it's bimonthly, all the way up to 180 days. Some agencies, like on their sewer side, put on a tax bill, then we recommend at least six months minimum because you have to wait for revenue to come in. And then on the capital side, typically you want at least one year's worth of capital so you don't have to wait for that revenue to come in to do your projects during that year. It also allows you to award contracts, knowing that you have the funds available. Another good reference point is to have at least your depreciation value as your reserve target for your capital. So you know that you have the revenue needed to continue with the depreciation of your assets. And then collectively, that makes up the minimum and the maximum.
That's helpful, thank you.
Mayor Potem, do you have any questions regarding the water before we move on to sewer?
I do. Yes, thank you, I do. And Habib, I'm sorry, my question has to do, pertains to the tables in the report. And it's tables four-six, which is the projected R and M expenses. Table four-seven, which is the water utility improvement plan. My question, the basic one, under the capital improvement plan, we show 304,500 a year being spent on asset management. And above that, the table right above that shows that our total capital outlay for repair and maintenance is anywhere from 350,000 to 393,000 going up to 2022. So I guess, can you just explain, are those two, those two numbers are separate, correct? The 304,000 a year in the capital improvement is different from the $350,000 a year in total capital outlet for repair and maintenance?
Yes, that's correct. The capital outlay is considered operating expense, and then above, beyond that, you have your capital plan that you fund.
And can you explain to us what would, on a, in a basic level, what would be the difference between a capital outlay for R and M, repair and maintenance, versus a capital improvement project that would be falling under the latter category?
Sure, actually, I would-
That might be a city manager-
Right, I'd rather turn it over to Public Works Department.
I'd like to defer to the Assistant City Manager on this. Yep, she's in the room. She's walking up.
Good evening, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening. Actually, when we talk about capital projects, we talk about capitalization or investment in capital assets, if you recall. So if it's a capitalizable, it's a new asset or replacement of an asset, that's capital program versus an expenditure that's considered repair and maintenance, then it would be as a capital outlay or expenditure.
So repair and maintenance-
Does that make sense?
I think so. So it sounds like the total capital outlay for repair and maintenance is at 350,000 or so. That's really just depreciation, like we're just replacing, we're trying to keep up the depreciation with that.
No, actually, it's repairs and maintenance expenditures versus investment in capital assets. Depreciation is not part of this 350 or 304,000. That's a separate number.
Okay, that's something different. Okay. Well, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions about water before we move on to sewer? Okay. You ready to go on?
Yes, absolutely. So with wastewater, again, what we're looking at is, we have 5% increase. About 5% correlates to just around a dollar, a dollar fifty bimonthly. So it's less than a dollar a month. We got a first year of 5% revenue adjustment, that's that dollar, and then 4% for the subsequent years. Very, very modest, you know, marginal adjustments. Capital outlay, you're basically just conveyance, you don't do your own treatment at the city. So that's why you see that at a low number. And then your balance is 333,000. Granted, depreciation is 213,000, but again, that's book value. Doesn't necessarily mean that that's how much needs to be done on an annual basis. You would look and determine what that need is each year. And then you have a little bit of debt service. Total accounts, or units, I should say, is 4,550. And then what we did was, we looked at the annual flow that is generated from your customers. We also assume the residents at a certain amount of gallons per day per capita. And we look at the density within the, within the city for residential, it's 2.29. And then, non-residential, we assume 90% of the water use goes, uh, uh, as discharged into the sewer system. Here are your existing rates. And really, what we're doing with this is just recalibrating your rates. Uh, so you'll see, uh, just slight adjustments on the residential and the commercial side. Again, current financials, I apologize for the size of the font. What we're looking here is your revenues are just shy of $900,000. Yeah, expensive a million. And your net income is a little bit less when you take account the amount for, for capital depreciation. When we look again, based on calculated versus budgeted revenues, we did this in water, we were at 2.2%. With wastewater, we're at 3%. So again, we're very, very close with, um, the actuals going off of recalculating revenue based on the billing system. Again, that makes us feel pretty comfortable. Current financials, you'll see that your current revenue is that green trend line. And then the bars are your expenses. You see this purple right here, that's your, that's your debt obligation. And notice that it's, uh, it goes, it gets retired in 2022. And that's going to pay dividends, um, in the long run because then that's going to become revenue that you could save and put to your, to your capital expenses. And then the, the lower shows what your, whoops, sorry. The lower shows what your capital expenses have been. Reserves, if this continues on without any adjustments, this is at no rate increase, no revenue adjustment. Here's your fund balance, and then obviously it's going to deplete over time. And your reserves would be fully depleted by 2021 if you did a nothing, nothing, nothing like the library.
Ouch.
No, no, no.
Or the no, no, no.
No, no, no.
Everything's connected, right? So the recommended financial plan, 5%, then 4%. And in doing that, granted, we're still not over the, your expenses in the first couple of years, but we're not looking at this to fix everything in one year. We're looking at it more long-term. And over the long run, you're, you are going to be able to recover. So you'll see here your reserves, they dip a little bit because of that shortfall that you have and your capital expense. But then, you'll notice that you're, you then, because the debt service goes away, you're able to build reserves up because then you're going to have that, this positive net income each year. Therefore, we don't look at it just one year, we look at holistically over the five-year plan where you want to be. And then that helps, you know, smooth rates out and make it more palatable to your customers. And here's the revenue requirements for your sewer enterprise fund. So we want to recover 932,000, and that includes the 5% adjustment. And now with the proposed, uh, fixed sewer charge, you're at 3379. Before, it was like 32, 3230, 3240, right around there. And commercial gets charged the same, um, fixed rate. And then, we also, uh, for commercial, uh, they get charged a flow rate because of the type of, um, discharge that they have. And, and their use is so different than residential. Residential is very consistent. The same amount of discharge occurs because it's just indoor, you know, you use, use restroom a certain amount of times, you shower a certain amount of times. It's very, it's very constant throughout the year. With not, with residential, it depends on the business type. So then, it makes more sense to, uh, have a component based on their amount of water use. And that would be 62 cents. So that also just got recalibrated. And with that, that concludes my summary of the wastewater utility as well. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. But again, you do have a full comprehensive report that's in draft form. And, uh, that has also been reviewed by your city attorney's office.
It's a very big-
Yes.
-part, it's many pages, small font. Uh, and do we have any questions about the sewer?
I have a general question about the proposed rates for water rates. And I don't know, I, this might be a staff question, but I'm just curious, as I know that we have, our current rates do include a low-income discount. And I was just, um, interested in the thought process of not proposing a low-income, um, rate for the proposed, for these proposed new rates.
Uh, Sheriff Councilmember Ayers, Mandy. The, uh, low-income discount or subsidy is a separate council decision. If after the rates are adopted, council would like to continue the policy, we'll bring it back separately because it's not, uh, the subsidy's not funded by the rates, it's funded through the general fund.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to point out, and it, it's not allowed to fund, be funded by the rates, uh, because of Prop 218.
Can you explain, um, a little bit more between the tier, the four-tier system we have now and the proposed two-tier system? And how that's going to help, um, some of our residents who may have those really high charges that they're getting now?
Uh, sure. Uh, we did a, uh, customer impact analysis, and we sent that to city, and that's available. But, um, basically, by changing the tiers, what we're doing is, we're, we're making it more focused on your water supply availability as opposed to before. It still took water supplies into account, but it looked at water use efficiency for residential. You know, with what, with residential, a lot of agencies look at, you need water for indoor, you need water for outdoor, anything else above that is excessive. So that right there is three tiers. And then you've got conservation programs, things of that sort, you have a fourth tier. With this one, we want, we want to make it a little bit more simplistic. And then also because of, you know, the mandates have come down, you know, through the years with, you know, conservation, things of that sort. Uh, it will provide good, you know, um, communications with your customers of knowing how much water you actually have and what's entitled to each customer. In doing so, it allowed us to give the cheapest amount of water that you have to your customers at the, at the highest allotment possible. But that, that made the tier width in tier one ex, um, expand. Uh, I think before it was around seven units, eight units of water, and now it's 14. Because we're saying, look, we know how much groundwater we have available, we're going, we're going to disperse that out to everybody evenly. Everyone, it doesn't matter the land use, every account has the same entitlement to the, to the groundwater. So it's easy to understand. And then, you also have your, your MWD water. When I did this last time, that MWD connection was just being built. Uh, so now this time, it's, we have good data and history of how much water you've been purchasing over time.
And have you taken into account the money that we need to use to, um, disperse the metropolitan water and the operating costs in order to get all those chemicals out? So that's all been taken into account, the operating costs?
That's been allocated to imported water versus groundwater. They each have a portion of pumping costs, correct? One other thing to point out, um, you do have a water loss that's somewhat high. It's, you know-
Really?
Getting close to that 20%. But what that does is, when you have additional funding for capital and you address those, you're going to see avoidable cost. Because then, you're going to save your water loss, which means you don't have to buy imported water. And then that's going to be savings to your customers over time.
Thank you. Um, any other questions, general questions before we open it up to the public?
Uh, Councilmember Goss and I, I mean, we spent a lot of time when we had our subcommittee meeting, and it was several hours of questions. So I think we've, we've had all our questions answered, if you're wondering why we're sitting here silent, you know?
I was kind of wondering that, yes. All righty, um, uh, Mayor Potem, do you have anything before we open it up to the public?
No, just, I'll save mine for comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, go ahead and open this item up for our public comment. Do we have anybody in the audience? And while we're getting our speaker, I would like to notice that we do have two scouts in the audience tonight. Welcome, gentlemen. Is this, are you here for like a social studies project or something? Nope, just because you're just here?
Just for fun.
Interested citizens.
Interested, well, welcome, thank you.
Dee Alcorn, as you know, my stick is the, uh, infrastructure. And it wasn't clear to me, I guess you have this, you, you do have the plan to upgrade the system to take care of that. And this, I guess this is all within the budget. It wasn't clear what happens, okay? If, he said about 5.2 million dollars, and they want to maintain it at that. Now, maybe I misunderstood what that number was, because I thought, what, what was that 5.2 million? Was that, you said, was the income, that was the thing was?
You, you can answer, come on up.
Current revenue.
Current revenue, okay. Well, and you want to maintain it at that current revenue, right?
For fiscal year 2019, this is an fiscal year.
Okay, well, then I guess that my question was, you have the surcharge for, there is a surcharge to take care of a upgrade of our infrastructure, I assume that's what that's for. Now, if it's at the same money, we're, why isn't it different? I mean, it didn't make sense to me. If, you know, if you had this increase and you say we're going to maintain it at the same thing, we got mirrors, or what, we can smoke, or whatever, you know? So I, anyway, it's not clear to me that, I'm, I'm glad to see that, anyway, that I, I probably, obviously don't understand some of the figures here, because a lot of numbers that go through there. And I'm glad to see that there is a, a, an aggressive, apparently aggressive stance to really upgrade and get our system so we can recruit some of that 20% that we're losing. That's a big number.
That is.
So I'm glad to see that. I'm just confused about, and I don't have to understand it, but it's not clear to me what that meant, you're going to maintain it at 5.2%. You've got these other money going up, but it's still 5.2% of, 5.2 million. So I don't know, anyway.
Let's see if we can get an answer for you, because if you're confused, other people are probably confused too.
Anyway, it came across that way, well, we're going to maintain it at 5.2%. But we have all the surcharge, supposed to get us above that, but it's still at 5.2 million, so.
He's going to explain.
Okay, right, so anyway, but anyway, I just want to say, I really appreciate the stance you all have taken, the really taken aggressive stance because there's been some bad news. And you're going to, on an ongoing basis, keep it up, so good on you, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, um, so our, our water loss is, uh, currently at 24.5% for the rate study. So I want, I want to put that out.
It happened to 19.
It's, uh, it was 19 in the, uh, last quarter of this year. Uh, and we're hoping when we report to the state, it'll be around there. For this, we determined it at 24.5%, which Habib said very nicely, is a little high. It's astonishingly high. Uh, so to answer Mr. Alcorn's, uh, question, there's three basic ways when we maintain our revenue, how we're going to invest more in infrastructure. Uh, one is, we've made a lot of operational changes in the general fund, uh, which has allowed us to allocate significantly less amount of funding from the water fund to the general fund in overhead costs. We'll have a final number in the budget, but it'll be greater than $100,000 annually at last count. Secondly, uh, we've reduced operating costs pretty substantially. Uh, you'll see in the second quarter of this next fiscal year, we'll bring forward additional operational cost savings, uh, likely in the form of solar at the spreading grounds, uh, which can reduce an additional 60,000 to 80,000 in operating costs per year through the electricity to pump. Uh, and then we also have a number of one-time things, uh, that we're able to do. We talked at the last meeting about when we did the bond refunding, uh, we received part of our, um, uh, the amount of debt, uh, payment we had to receive, received a portion of that back, and we were able to put that towards capital. Uh, council also instructed staff, I believe in 2014, uh, to buy a significant amount of water and store it. Uh, we bought that at either 200 or 250 dollars per acre foot. Uh, instead of spending 400 dollars per acre foot this year, uh, we'll release that, not buy the water, and put that 500,000 dollars into infrastructure. So what that looks like is you saw our average infrastructure expense has been around, uh, $300,000 in the current budget year. We spent, um, just shy of a million. In the coming budget year, we're projected to spend 2.2 million. Uh, in the year after that, we're projected to be between one and 1.5 million right now. Uh, so we're hoping that that big push will allow us to get through the worst offenders of the, the leaks that we have. And then, uh, the infrastructure charge that we have in place should allow us, over time, to have a responsible, well-managed infrastructure system. Uh, but to Mr. Alcorn's point, the 350,000 is not enough to catch us up, which is why we've had to reduce operating expenses, look at, um, some very good one-time opportunities and adjust our allocations based on efficiencies in the general fund.
But also, the city manager, the base revenue of 5.2 million is just maintained in fiscal year 2019, it's going to increase in the following years, correct?
The answer is potentially. We built in, it's indexed to CPI, so there's a pass-through cost. For example, um, if, uh, water from MWD increases, then the rates will increase. But if CPI doesn't increase or only increases minimally, that, uh, in addition to the pass-through, is all, all the rates will increase. So one of the things we tried to do, in addition to simplifying it from, uh, four tiers to two tiers, based on the amount of water we can produce, we also tried to have a market-based approach, um, that wasn't what you typically see where you take, uh, big changes in, in one year followed by set percentage increases in the next year, uh, without a plan on how to spend it.
Okay, um, calm down.
Hi, I'm Bill Patzert, 442 Mary Poza. Mayor, council, citizens. Well, there's, there's good news and there's bad news about the water system. Now, the good news is, is that, right now, we're paying a pretty low price for our water. It's unusually low, actually. And so, uh, that, that's good news. But of course, it was better when we didn't have to buy any water. But, uh, the bad news is that, like all cities that are over a century old, is that the infrastructure is failing, and in particular, the water system is extremely leaky. And so the question is, is do you maintain the maintenance at a level that we have it now, which is really Band-Aids, where you're going out and you're handling on it a crisis-by-crisis thing? Or do we have a systematic plan in place to actually rebuild over, say, the next 50 years, the, uh, infrastructure of the water system and the sewage system? Okay, so, the, the, make the long story short here, is, is that I think maybe we're not charging enough for our water. All right, I know everybody wants to keep the cost down, but 24% is a huge leakage. By the way, some cities actually have leakages as high as 50%, all right? So 24% looks good. So anyhow, my, my little suggestion here to you is, is that you're not charging enough for your water. You need a long-term plan, not just to do crisis management, but actually a long-term replenishment of the entire water system. And in the long run, I don't know when the cross-off will be, whether it'll be 10 years or 15 years, it'll cost the city less. That's it.
Thank you. Do you have anybody else for public comment? Okay, CNN, we'll bring it back to council for comment, discussion.
And maybe, uh, city manager, you can address that last question with, um, our, our water infrastructure plan is a long-term plan to, to, I mean, not fully replace, but not just a Band-Aid, it is to increase me-
Councilmember Ayers, Mandy, the, uh, water master plan we have in place is designed to, like we said earlier, have a responsibly managed infrastructure system. I think, uh, how I took Mr. Patzert's point is, uh, that potentially the rates don't get us out of crisis quick enough. Um, and I, I think there is an argument, uh, a valid argument that could be made there, that even when we're talking about spending 2.2 million in infrastructure, because we are in crisis mode, um, it won't get us out quick enough, uh, to, to a responsibly managed system. When we talked to council, when we first brought the loss numbers forward, um, we said that this is a multi-generational fix. Uh, we're not going to be able to get out of it quickly, even if we throw a lot of money at it because of how, um, how bad we let our system get. So I, I think Mr. Patzert has a, a valid point. Uh, the question is, um, not if we'll get to it, because we will, but how quickly.
Thank you.
Well, let me, let me just follow up on that for just a minute, uh, as a question. Because I fully support this water rate study as it is. But I think the, we, we should, for the, at least the public's mind, let them in on the idea, just how, what are our goals here, because we don't have enough money, uh, under the current water rate structure to get, uh, a significant number of water mains repaired and replaced in the next 10 years. We have a priority list, and we'll get to most of them. And our water utility is well aware of where the worst problems are. We've already made a lot of progress, actually, in the last couple of years, significant progress. But, can you, can you, can maybe our utility director or the general manager comment on what our, our projected water, uh, loss curve looks like over the next 10, 15 years, based on this water rate study?
So, um, we have, currently we have 18 water mains in design. They should be ready, uh, for July 1st, for a new fiscal year. Of those, I think we're looking- Of those, I think we're looking at about 10 water mains. I think the biggest savings is going to be with the AMI project, where I feel that we'll gain about five, anywhere from 5 to 10 percent in efficiency in water that's being distributed in the system. So I think in the next year or two, we'll be able to see numbers anywhere between 5 and 10 percent improvement in water loss.
And just back you up to, because some people maybe are watching, didn't see that AMI discussion, exactly how does that work?
So we know that 50 percent of our meters are, have exceeded their, their useful lifespan. We've tested a batch of about 40 of those meters, and we've seen anywhere between 8 and 12 percent inefficiency in those meters. So we know that by replacing those meters, we're going to recover a lot of water that's passing through the meters that's not accounted for.
So approximately, where does that get us down to, 10 years from now?
So I think in the next two years, we can be in the 15 percent. And depending on, on water mains and how aggressive we are, I'm, I'd be comfortable saying the next 10 years, we'd probably be in the 10 percent.
And we had some numbers some time ago about the total cost of replacing the entire system in one fell swoop, what was that, like 50 million dollars, something in that neighborhood? So that's really not even, that's not something that we can even be talking about.
Correct.
One thing I want to add to that, if I could, when Council saw the Water Master Plan, we tended to focus on the water mains that were outlined in red, those are the ones that caused us the most loss, they're the biggest trouble, but we asked Council to focus not on the red, but on the orange.
Yeah.
Because as we fix, we fixed seven, I think, this year out of the top 10, 18 coming in design, the question for where we'll be in water loss after AMI is done, which will be a significant savings, is how quickly do those pipes that are orange degrade to the, to the point where they're defunct? Right now, we're still averaging 400 leaks a year, even with replacing the worst offenders of leaks. So we've, we've got, again, we try and stress, even though we can speculate on where water loss is going to be, we try and stress, no matter what we do, this is a multi-generational problem, intergenerational equity and responsibility, and we started, we got a good start on it, but we have to continue.
But given that, the infrastructural cost expenditure around 300,000 a year, within a year and a half, we'll be at 2 million, so we're almost seven times that, right? So I mean, we're, we're actually making a very significant change here.
We are, I would also point out, the 300,000, the money when Director Reynoso and I talk about improvement, capital improvement, is, tends to be in water mains. Previously, a lot of that capital improvement, maybe I don't want to say a lot of it, but certainly not all of it, went to water main replacement. So even when you see that 300,000 dollars, you can equate that to it's all being spent on water main replacements, there's other capital needs that the water system has, which we still spend money on, but looking at that number, it's, what we've spent on main replacements historically has been significantly less, even than what that number shows, because we have other capital needs.
Thanks. Thank you.
Any other comment? Mayor Protem, anything from you?
Yes, thank you, and, and before I do, can you just clarify, Mr. City Manager, just, how are we getting 2 million dollars on capital spending, whether it's repair and maintenance or, or actual capital improvements, when we're showing, we're showing light items of 300,000 respectively on the capital improvement, and then 350 or so on the repair and maintenance? So, can you just, where, where are we reflecting that we're going to get to 2 million, you know, eventually?
There's, the three largest areas where you'll see funding come from next year, excluding operational improvements, which have yet to be budgeted. We had the AMI discussion last council meeting, and a big portion of that comes through the bond refunding, and the amount of debt payment that was released to us. The second biggest portion, that's, I believe that's about 650,000. The next biggest portion, which will be about 500,000, is the water Council instructed us to buy in the past, which will release this year, as opposed, or next year, I'm sorry, next fiscal year, as opposed to paying to import the cost of water. And the third area will be from fund balance or cash from the water fund itself, that we spend on the infrastructure needs.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I know you described that, it, it, you know, when you look, and it pops out at me, is, about the water rate study, first of all, thank you very much to Raftellus and the Water Subcommittee Committee, I think they did a great job, and I think the new, can you hear me, sorry?
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, the new structure, I think, is great, I think it makes a lot of sense, I think that it, it is adapted to where we are today with importing water, and so I, I really love fundamentally how we've approached this. What I don't like is that I'm staring at a significant water loss problem, and I view our projected, at least budgeted, capital outlay, both in repair and maintenance, and in our capital improvement plan, as just being too light. And, and I think that my perspective is, is really informed by the last water rate study that we went through, where I have had a lot of regrets that we weren't moved enough, specifically as to AMI, I still regret the fact that we didn't include AMI in that water study, and then five years later, we finally, you know, got it done. But I think that actually hurt us quite a bit, because at that time, we were very worried about doing something that really needed to be done, i.e. the AMI metering, because we thought it would increase rates too much, and people would be upset, and we might not win the protest vote, but I think that was actually a mistake. And I think today, fast forwarding into where we are, I really think that we need a bolder plan for our capital improvement, and for our, our capital outlays for repair and maintenance. I think that putting in some of these one-time numbers that we just talked about, which eventually gets us up a million, if I'm just looking at what we're budgeting, we're really not increasing anything from what we had previously budgeted in the prior water rate studies. So you're looking at 600 to 650,000, that creeps a bit up over the next five years, but I think if we're, if we're realistic, and we look in the mirror, the thing that really punched us on the gut was this 24 percent loss, and I know water loss, and I know metering, that's going to improve, but I think that down the road, to the extent we front load and spend more money, and budget more money in this water rate, or capital improvements, and for cap, repairs and maintenance, I think we're going to save money in the, and Mr. Patzert made this point, I think you're going to save money in the long run on the water loss, and I think you're going to save money on an improved system. And so to me, I just think that, that I have more of an appetite for a larger capital improvement program, and for more money for total capital outlets, and, so I guess I would just call the, my colleagues, that now I like everything about the water rate study, what I don't like is that I don't think we're being bold, bold and aggressive enough in our capital improvement numbers, and I think we really, we really should be. I don't know if that capital improvement number on paper doubles from 300 and 4,000 to 600, you know, I don't know if we do that, or, you know, we come up to 500,000, but I think that, I think there's definitely room there. And I think if you look at how it's going to affect the fixed rate, you know, ultimately, how is that going to, to affect the water, I don't think it's going to affect it much, you know, you can kind of just do the math, you know, it all goes into the fixed rate and spread over 3,900 users, I think it's actually probably a minimal, you know, 5 to 10 dollars extra per month. So, you know, that would be my one, my one piece of, I guess the one change that I would make, was I, I would just invest more in the capital improvement, and I think it's something that we haven't done in the past, I'm glad that we're doing it now, going forward with all these one-time fixes and abilities with operating efficiencies, actually put more money there, but we can institutionalize it more by increasing the numbers that we budgeted in the water rate study. So I don't know the water rate, you know, the Subcommittee, I assume, this was part of the debate and part of the questioning, and we came to the conclusion on these numbers for various reasons, but I don't know what, what all you folks think about that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Councilman Harabedian, yeah, here, I agree with you to a degree, but let me just put it in a little bit different perspective, and if I just look at the, like, the smallest meter size, three-quarter inch or less, I mean, basically, the, you know, the, the fixed charge doesn't change much, and the actual charge for, at least in tier one, doesn't change much, so the difference is the infrastructure charge, which is 2175, so that's a, a pretty significant rate hike, in my mind. So to your point, it's like, okay, so we try to raise it a little bit more, if we just did, there's 3,800 customers, roughly we raised it 10 dollars per customer, per month, well, that'd be 20 dollars every two months, that would bring in almost another 500,000 dollars in revenue. So we could do that, but it's like, it's like you, it's almost like you just, you can't get there fast enough, anyway, so how big a hit do you want to put? And again, this is a discussion we've had before, we're afraid to charge too much, but I'm seeing this as a, a significant, enough of a rate increase, and, you know, I'm hesitant to go too far with that, because now you're talking about doing something that's pretty radically, you know, higher. So, I don't know, I just think that, you know, our staff has put together a, a pretty good plan to reduce the, the leakage significantly over the next couple of years, and as City Manager says, it's a generational problem. We didn't get here overnight, and we're not going to get out of it overnight, but I, I see a plan that is making steady progress, increasing the reserves, continuing to spend more on infrastructure that we have spent. So I, I mean, I could be persuaded to go more, but then again, we're always at that risk of how high do you go before you, you know, it's, it's outrageously high. I also want to point out, too, just on the, the price of the, the second tier, the average, if you, the weighted average of the, the three highest tiers today was 390, and now we're going up to, what was it, 4, 423? So that's not significantly higher, but that's extra revenue that's going into the plan there, too, so you're, you're paying more, more for the water going forward, really. So I don't know, it's just my thought, I'm, I'm okay with where we're at, but I, I could be persuaded to go higher, if we really thought that was in the public's best interest to do that, so.
I would like to, I'd like to know, have something a little more concrete, I mean, just the allocation of a little more money, or spending a little more money, I'd like to know what that would get us, in terms of a, an accelerated water main replacement program, do we have any, any metric for something like that?
So there, there's some rules of thumb, what Director Reynoso and Director Semino did was design a lot of pipes, replacements, main replacements, to get savings in the installation, but I think we talk about doing one section of street from block to block, it's like 100,000 dollars, give or take, sometimes they're more complex, if you're in the canyon, sometimes you've got to go deeper, if you're on Sierra Mountain Boulevard, it's easier, but in general, if we're looking at 100 to 150,000 per main, per block, that's roughly what we'd be looking at. To the, the point on the bimonthly billing of the, the 2175, and what Mr. Isaac said is about 10 dollar a month increase, I think it's for every 5 dollars in fixed charge, I believe it equates to 100, 5 dollars each month, it equates to 175,000 dollars in additional capital expenditure. That's back-of-the-invelope math, and there's other variables, but just in an attempt to try and frame a decision. We, we have a large number of pipes that need to be replaced, we've got a good percentage of our pipes that have already failed and are in the ground, we do think, over time, this plan will get us there, the, I think the question, as Mr. Patzert framed it, is how, how quickly do we get there? Also recognizing there is a bandwidth problem, of we can only design so many water main replacements in, in a year, before we're not doing anything else.
Could you do more?
Yeah, I think, I think we could do more, I may want to let either Director Semino or Director Reynoso answer that, but I think in, in general, Director Semino made a pretty impassioned plea at budget that we weren't doing enough, which is why you're seeing the 2.2 million in the budget next year, so I think we probably could.
Taking on water main projects, it's twofold, we could do more, probably double what we've, what we've been doing, or what we have planned to do, but you can't take on too much, we would, the city would constantly be in a construction mode, we would, wouldn't be making many friends out there with, with our staging areas and that sort of thing, but, you know, up to, you know, a million and a half, 2 million dollars a year, would probably be pushing it for projects, for water mains only.
And I, I think the guiding principle we gave Raftellus was revenue neutral in the fund, and if, if Council wants to make a decision to be more aggressive, we're comfortable with that, but the, the basis we gave him was, make sure we can do this without changing what the average bill is, or not increasing the total revenue in the, in the water fund. So anything we do outside of this would no longer hold true to that, which is fine, because it was a, I mean, that's just the matrix we used.
So to Mayor Protem's point, if we were to consider not going with this study, but looking at maybe an increase in the water rates, we would have to come back with that new study, right? Or?
No, Mayor, I think, I think there's two ways we could handle that. One, Council could give direction tonight to increase the fixed charge for infrastructure fee, based on an amount that Council's comfortable with, we could have Raftellus build that into the fixed charge, and then we could still, we gave ourselves about 10 days before we have to start the 218 process, or we could come back at the next council meeting with the new infrastructure charge, but because Council historically does not meet in August, that means we wouldn't be able to tally the 218 votes until September, which means new rates wouldn't be in effect until November, like.
I hesitate to do an increase in the fixed rate without doing the customer impact study, along with it.
Right, absolutely, we, we could do both of those, and then in the next 10 days, we could determine a comfort level, or we could have another special meeting. I would prefer, if we're going to do that, we get direction tonight on what Council is comfortable with, and then we can bring that back to Council. What we don't want to do is wait until September, if possible, for this change, because again, that, that means we'll be almost into mid-year before rates are implemented.
So I'm going to ask the Council, what is their pleasure, do you want us to go ahead and entertain that idea that Mayor Protem brought up, as possibly increasing the rates a bit, in order to bring in more revenue, in order to do our, improve our infrastructure timeline?
Can I suggest something? How about if we just propose an increase in that infrastructure charge that's temporary, and lasts, and sunsets? Is that? Or I hate to use that word.
John, why would, why would you do, why would you necessarily do, I agree, I agree with your previous comments, which, you know, we're not going to get, I think this is a generational problem, you're not going to get out of it.
Yeah.
Anytime soon, so why, you know, why, why not just, you're going to do it, might as well do it, rather than doing temporarily, unless.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I mean, you're constantly going to have to be improving your infrastructure, I mean, it never goes away, right? Never goes away.
Especially ours, we're way behind.
And, and I guess to, to Councilmember Goss's point, I thought, I thought it was a great question, which is, and I, I didn't really hear a specific answer, but what is the incremental value, so rather than doing this kind of blind, like, you know, oh, going up 100,000, you know, what do we have in number, because what I heard from staff, Director Semino, we probably could take on more, yeah, we might not be making friends on a daily basis, but I, I think that people, I'll tell you overwhelmingly, I think, the issues that we've heard the past couple of years, in residences, you know, do whatever you need to do to, to update our system, because it's old and we're losing too much water, and I'm sick of water mains breaking, et cetera, so, you know, I think, yeah, we might be in construction mode more, but I think people will understand why we're doing that, and I think they'll actually be appreciative. So, I think, but Councilmember Goss's point was a good one, which is, what is the incremental number, you know, if it's, if 450 is a magic number, is it 500? You really don't want to just do like a shot in the dark, I, I don't think 305,000 seems to be a magic number, either, what is currently in there, so, and I guess the point is, what would be, if we were to increase, so what, what would be something that staff would like to see it go to, to actually, over the next five years, make a material difference?
So Mayor Protem, I, I think we would refer back to our Water Master Plan, to, to come up with a number, we, again, what, what we tell people is there's, we'll, we'll always have more need than bandwidth, and you're certainly correct, the 350,000 that we're talking about, is, it's not a magic number, that's the number we could get to while remaining revenue neutral in the. That's the number we could get to while remaining revenue neutral in the fund and taking into account the efficiencies that would be able to put more money into infrastructure already. So if, I think if we're hearing from council is we, we would have to refer back to the Water Master Plan and then determine the ability of Public Works to design these, and then to come back to council and to the mayor's point with the customer impact numbers as well. We would either need a special meeting or accept that the 218 process would not end until September.
Can we also do, not go dark in August and have a meeting in August?
Certainly, council can certainly control that, yes.
I'd rather squeeze.
Well, yeah, I guess what makes this even more difficult for me, and, you know, obviously not, you know, it's hard because I can't look at you on the eye, but, you know, when we talk about, you just used the number 350, which is the capital outlay for, for repair and maintenance. I was previously talking about the $350,000 number for the capital improvement, and then we have this other $2 million number floating out there. So, you, you know, it's unclear to me what number is really the bogey. You know, what am I really looking at? You know, it seems like from a budgeted water improvement plan, we have this $2 million number we're going to get to, but then we have these two separate numbers, the 350,000 and the $350,000 number in the water rate study. And so, you know, I guess I'm getting a little confused then as to what are we really debating here? I mean, you know, is the $350,000 number, which is the repair and maintenance, really what we need to increase because that's going to be what's going into the main replacement? Or is it the $350,000 number, which is part of the capital improvement plan? And how is that affecting that $2 million number that we keep coming back to?
Can I, you know, again, to me, I would just look at it, try, a little more simply, and I think we've had some numbers thrown out there. We, we have more bandwidth. You're going to reach a point where, you know, maybe it's too much, your streets are torn up too much, and we're probably not going to get to that point, because we would have to raise rates dramatically to, to raise that amount of money every year to make that big of a difference. So I would, I would think about it this way, is it's, what do we think is, people will tolerate as far as a rate increase? I mean, you know, your goal was to keep it revenue neutral overall, and Councilmember Harabedian, you think that there certainly is more of an appetite amongst the, the rate payers to, to spend more. So why don't we approach it from that point of view? The need is great. No matter what we do, it's really not enough to fix the problem. So why don't we just consider what a tolerable increase in rates are, knowing that, you know, the city can work with that and, and spend that money productively?
And you're, you're referring to tolerable to the residents?
Pardon me?
Yes.
You're saying tolerable rate for the residents?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So like I say, you know, I mean, this, this, you know, speaking for the smaller customers, this looks like about a $21 or $20 increase in the bill for the lower users in the first tier with the smaller pipe. So just, just starting with them, that's the biggest, I think, the population. So, okay, $20 is certainly tolerable, I think. Is $40 tolerable? You tell me, what do you think?
Well, and I, I'm not sure how to answer that. I, my, I'm still going with, in my head, I'm thinking about, yeah, I mean, I know we need to think about what's tolerable, but we also need to think about what the need is. I keep going back to the AMI discussion. I mean, we always kick ourselves about, we should have done it back then, we should have done this. And I, I'd hate to, and I can appreciate Mayor Protem's comment, is that I think this is the time to be more aggressive at this point, because there is a need for it. So, yes, what is tolerable, this might be also an education piece that we need to go out for, but what I'd hate to do is, at this opportunity, at the 218, to, for Prop 218, is we, we have to hit it now, because otherwise, we'll come back and say, we should have done it back then.
I know.
Like the AMI, I keep thinking about the AMI piece. So, you know, I don't know what the magic number is, but to Mayor Protem's point about the $2 million, I mean, to me, what I'm hearing from the City Managers, that's a one-time $2 million with, you know, you talk through some of these items. So I don't know if that's an ongoing expense that we're looking at every year, and understanding that we have a bandwidth issue also. I don't know what the magic number is, and I think we need to find out, what can we manage? But going back to the revenue neutral, is the idea that just so, any revenues we make will go into reserves? Is that correct? Can we, I know we can't make money out of it, but any revenue would go into reserves?
Our expenses will likely exceed our revenues because of our, we're enhancing our infrastructure program.
Okay.
So any, anything that wasn't covered through expenses, yes, would go into reserves. We're not anticipating collecting a lot of reserves or growing our reserves is, is almost everything we get, we're going to put into infrastructure.
So my, my thought is, I think we should take a look at what the need is and what the bandwidth is of what the staff can do, and come back with that number, and let's say it is, I don't know, a million a year, and incorporate that into the tiered water rates and the infrastructure fixed charge. There might be a point where it's too much, where, like you're saying, you go to $50. People will be like, absolutely, no, I'm writing my protest in. So finding that balance of what is tolerable, but also really what the need is, as opposed to coming back in a few years, saying we should, we just should have done it.
So what is our need and what is our ability, right?
So I, I think, Mayor, I think what we'll come back with is we will go back to the water rate study, and we'll determine what our bandwidth is, and then we'll show council what the bimonthly charge is in, increasing in increments, what that'll take the total bill to, and what infrastructure that will fund out of the Water Master Plan. So you'll likely see.
Yeah.
Three or four scenarios coming back.
Oh, great. That'll be good. And then in the meantime, if you all, my fellow colleagues, can decide if you want to come back in August, or if you want to squeeze in a special election, along with all the different vacations that everybody has planned. I don't want an answer tonight, but.
Well, I'm going to give you one. I don't want to come back in August.
Me neither.
I don't know if we can squeeze one in.
Well, let's try.
Is that, Mayor Protem, anything else from you?
No, that, that's it. And yeah, I, I'll try, you know, the special meeting, that's fine, I'll, I'll work with whatever works for you guys, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to comment, because I didn't get to thank the Water Subcommittee. I know a lot of time and effort has gone into this, and also to the staff, and I really do want to extend my appreciation, and I know, you know, presenting it and going this far and presenting it, but I, this groundwork had to be done anyway for us to get to this discussion, so thank you so much for that time. There were days that I think I was here and you were still meeting, and like after two or three hours for one meeting, so I know a lot of time was put into this work, so thank you.
And if we can do it better, we can. If not, this is certainly excellent, and thank you to our consultants there. So since we haven't adopted this, we don't need to do two, three, or four?
I'm sorry, say that again, Mayor.
I said, since we have, we are not adopting the draft, then we don't need to do two, three, and four?
Oh, correct. We'll, we'll bring everything updated back to council.
So is the intention to bring this back to the next meeting?
Yes, we'll have it back at the next meeting, and we'll determine through a poll if that's a special meeting prior to the July meeting or, or somewhere else, or the June meeting, I'm sorry.
Do you, has everybody provided our City Manager with their vacation schedule, so he knows our time's off on Friday?
My vacation schedule is when we're not in session.
I don't have a vacation schedule, so there you go.
Yeah, me neither, I'll be around.
That does it for that. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to.
Do you have an idea for a future agenda item? We have constituents who'd like us to discuss ordinance 17 dot 22 dot 130. It's having to do with recordation, deed restriction, and covenant requirements.
Oh, yeah.
On, to get a building permit for a second unit. I'd like to see if we could have a chat about that.
Yeah, we're happy to bring that back, Councilmember Goss.
I would second that.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands or motions, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.